Good evening, Dennis. Once everybody is on video on the commission, we'll be ready to go.
Four, one more. Evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Some Mark's name up here, but.
Yeah, he's connecting to audio right now. He should be popping in a second.
Oh, he's in the waiting room.
Oh, okay, I've admitted him. He was. Must have disconnected briefly. Mark, are you able to connect to your video? And you're currently muted, but I get that you're here.
There we go. There we go. I don't know what I don't know what it was.
Okay.
Hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we're good.
Hey, I think we have everybody here. Here we go. Good evening, friends and neighbors. I would like to call to order the Malibu Planning Commissioner regular meeting of December 5th, 2022. Happy birthday, Dylan. This meeting is being held in tele by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Commissioners and city staff are participating in a Zoom meeting from remote locations. All votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to MalibuCity.org/virtualmeeting. At that screen, click on one of two tabs to either watch or sign up to speak on particular items. Those wishing to speak must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Please sign up before the item has been called by the chair. Those wishing to defer time to someone else intending to speak are not required to sign up but must be present in the meeting. If instead of speaking, you wish to donate your time to another speaker, please click Raise Your Hand button at the bottom of the Zoom screen when the public hearing for the item is opened. A speaker may accept up to five additional minutes, one minute for each from each speaker that defers time for a maximum total of eight minutes. Alex, would you show us the slide? Or I guess Alex may not be tonight. Okay, there we go. Commissioners, when you have comments, please raise your hand and I will call on you in turn so we may make our discussion clear for the record and the public. May I have a roll call, please?
Answers no.
I was moving along so well.
Sorry about that. I had a screen I was trying to save and it wouldn't let me click over. Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Wen.
Here.
Vice Chair Mazza.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, may I have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for the meeting was properly posted on November 23rd, 2022, and the amended agenda was properly posted on December 1st, 2022.
Great.
I'd like to make a question to approve the agenda. And I understand, and staff, correct me if I'm incorrect on this. I moved to approve the agenda as staff recommends with and the question is, is item 4B going to be held? So with item 4B continued to X and item, item 5B continued to whatever date staff recommends.
And what actually we were going to propose on those, if it was okay with the chair is your agenda for January, the first meeting in January does have a large number of items on it. So we were thinking if it's okay with the commission that if the applicant gets us the materials in a timely manner, we would need everything before the end of the year. We could actually renotice for the February meeting. And so if it's okay with the commission tonight, we could essentially continue it to a date uncertain. If they give us the materials, we'll get it to you guys in February. And the reason why I say this is that this is a way to avoid a situation where if it gets continued to February, they don't get us the materials in time. We don't have another continuance on our hands.
Separate item 4B.
4B. And I believe Adrian, correct me if I'm wrong, 5B as well?
Yes.
So 4B and 5B, you'd be able to put both of them on in February if you got the materials by the end of the year.
So I'm ending my motion to a date uncertain on both 4B and 5A. Correct?
Oh, 5B.
5B.
Question?
Yes.
Do we get to hear why? What's, I mean, what if we wanted to hear these things tonight? Is there a question here or do they really have to be continued or what's up?
The applicant in is it's the same applicant in both cases, Don Schmitz, and his office would like to have a time to submit additional materials to, to address the statements raised in both staff reports.
Okay, I guess it's not very explicit, but that's we'll give them deference, right?
I assume that's due to the delay in the staff reports being issued.
One of them, yes, we I made them aware that we were going to recommend denial. But yes, it is the I've cited the, the, the late publishing deadline on the denial and then on the 18 805 PCH, it has to do with some disagreements in the report that they wish to propose additional information to address the issue as well as, and once again, Adrian can jump in here if I misspeak, but I believe they also had some disagreement with the discussion on ridge line.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second. Okay. Well, let's go for a roll call then.
Vice Chair Mazza.
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Wetton.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Posted, oh ceremonial presentations, we, we don't have any, I don't think. That somebody's got something. So written and oral communications from the public.
At this time, no members of the public signed up in advance to speak on matters within the purview of the planning commission which are not on the agenda for this evening. If there's someone present in the meeting who does wish to speak, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen now. And seeing none.
Wow, we got a whole bunch of people watching us and nobody wants to speak. Okay, very good. Planning Commission staff, comments, inquiries, commissioners. Vice Chair Mazza.
Yes. Several things. One. I think because of this question of Friday afternoon staff reports, we should, I know I talked to Trevor today and there's a 72 hour notice which we make. But I've always had a problem with the, the public not being able to see the staff reports until Monday. So I think we should consider some other cutoff point. Now, another thing that came up in discussion with staff was we're getting and, and the city council, actually, we're getting farther and farther behind and I think part of the reason is all the changes that are happening on these power rebuild applications and other applications at the last minute. And it has to go back through the planning department again. And so I think speed things up and to help the planning department out with their extra expenses. Hopefully, the planning department will ask the city council to have an extra fee for changes after a project's deemed complete. I think that will cut down on the changes and it will also speed the process up. The other thing, we're going to have a couple new planning commissioners probably in January. And I know when Mikey and I came on years ago, or actually I came on before him, I think, but we got training. We got Brown Act, we got, we got little manuals from the California League of Cities on what a planning commissioner is supposed to do. We got sent to seminars. And that's been lacking for years. And I think we ought to give the new planning commissioners a break. And at least give them some kind of introduction what they have to be doing because they're going to be stepping into a very busy schedule next year. Extremely busy, I have a feeling. And it's, it's hard, I know it's hard to get all the code down and what your duties are and all that stuff before it happens. So that's just a suggestion. That's my comments. Oh, I also want to, if if we have planning commissioners that aren't coming back, I want to thank them for what they've done for the last two to whatever 20 years, whatever it is. And because I'm sure next meeting will be a lot of ceremony and not much talking. Thanks.
Commissioner Hill. You're muted.
Yeah, I'm unmuted. Thank you. Yeah, good evening, everybody. Just I have a handful of things, but just to reply quickly to John's comments. We've discussed having a cutoff date for submissions for reports, etc. I think that's a good idea, but that sounds like something we would just want to talk about with the new commission, probably. And on the training, I did have the training you talked about. I wonder if Mark and Dennis, did you have the same deal? With the
Well, we had, we had Brown Act training. I think we also had a manual, so I think the things that John spoke of, we had.
Okay.
No, I don't, we didn't go to any seminars or anything like that, but.
So when I was in Marietta and I was on my traffic and safety commission and, and a couple other commissions, I did go to classes down in Palm Desert with many people. So I had, had gone to classes years ago, yes.
We, we had that on the table at one point to do some of that soon after I joined and then there was not funding because of Woolsey, etc. Well, maybe it wasn't Woolsey, but apparently we have more funding now, so maybe that's something to continue to, to consider again.
Yeah, maybe, maybe Richard would give us a loan.
Well, yeah, okay, so onto my, my planned comments. I've seen a TV ad for VRBO, the SDR host, and the whole point of it is when you stay in a VRBO, your host doesn't stay with you. Without privacy, it isn't a vacation. So it seems like their whole pitch now is directed at ordinances like Santa Monica's host ordinance and what we have proposed. So I have a few questions of Richard. You can make notes here to answer when I'm done, but so one question is whether there's any update yet on what's going on with coastal. Secondly, an update on Caltrans and what we looked at the last time, there was a little bit of confusion about Commissioner Wetton thought that Caltrans had said that the timing of it wasn't really an issue because they would adjust the traffic flow based on the current conditions. And in fact, I look back at the thing and what they said was that, no, they wouldn't adjust it. They would, they were basing it on the pre-existing traffic data, which we never even got to see. So in future, it would be good to, if, if there's a traffic report on something like that, it would be good for us to see that. Also, I think on that same CCAT wall project, it's a little unclear. The coastal commission is holding a hearing on a CCAT wall. I think it's that, maybe the next, next door. But the MRC is wanting a condition to fund more of their dubious coastal access. And I say dubious because it's in a location right there between Big Rock and, and the tuna view access. And there's, there's no beach. It's all rock and there's no lateral access because of the rock. So they want to do a little something like what they did at Figment Cove down below my house, which was to spend $350,000 on pretty much nothing. And they're changing the name of it to Miramar, something or other, which is strange because there are already two Miramars in California. But I, I just wondered if that is in fact the same CCAT wall, why didn't we hear MRCA wanting the condition of funding added to our application? And just what, what is going on there? What's the nexus between highway repair work and funding for an access project? Next, I was reminded that 15, 20 years ago, we had this coastal trail in the works that was I think it was always a vision and nothing that was going to be definite, but I just wondered what has become of that? And is it? Is it now legally dead or is it simply more of awaiting some future interest to awaken it? And then on the subject of ADUs, remind me, I'm a little confused. It's been a while and I think the public may be confused. Based, looking at the county ordinance, my understanding is that if you're in a very high fire hazard zone, there's an exemption to the state ADU ordinance. I'm a little fuzzy about that, but that would be good to clarify. And in any case, second units don't allow you to go over TDSF, I think is what we all understand. And then finally, Jeff, I don't know if you're, are you, is this your last meeting? Do you know yet? Can you tell us?
Is Commissioner Servicella replacement is the I don't know.
Well, if, if it, if it turns out to be, I don't know. I just wanted to say thank you for all your service and to relate as what I thought was a telling story where a couple decades ago, I came in front of the council with an appeal and you were on the council at the time. And I wrote 60 some pages of a brief on that. And when I came up to speak, one of the other council members who was I'll just say cranky, I won't give their name. Just laid into me like, what the hell do you think you're doing writing all this stuff and making us read it? And I'm paraphrasing, of course. And, and you said, whoa, 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 wait, hang on. This writing is pretty clear and lucid and you know, whether we agree with it or not, he's making some sense here. So you know. Anyway, thank you for, for being that. And I think you've held out a model of strict but fair, which is something I think we, we can all aspire to. So thanks. And those are my comments. I look forward to some answers.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes. Can't imagine saying that, Commissioner Hill. I'll take your word for it. I'll take your word for it, um. I run the, in the Malibu Times, uh, their latest issue, uh, about the Riddick, um. Decision and the, the, the trial court decision and. I'd really like to get some sort of feedback, uh, on an ongoing basis from staff about. Where we are, whether that affects what we should be doing, what we should be thinking. Maybe you can't do it because. You know, it's in the process and, and you, you don't wanna disclose. Uh, your theories and so forth, but, but it does seem to me that. It, it just has me a little concerned that, that, you know, that I'm worried that we might. Do something that has already been determined by, I'd like to buy a trial court. Uh, to be inappropriate, so if you can do it, I'd appreciate it, um. I am kinda surprised i- i- if, uh, the, the, uh, as a sort of a. Sidebar to that, I, the, the Times indicated that. The city council had decided to take the case on appeal. Which I guess is probably happened, and it just. It does seem to me that that's a little peculiar. Given the fact that a trial court determination isn't really. Uh, doesn't create a precedent and, and so it, it, but I just, when I read that, if I don't, my God. That woman's gonna be dead before that, before that ADU gets built. So, those are my comments and, uh. Again, thanks to, uh, to Greg and, uh. And John for the kind words.
Commissioner Wetton?
Well, I, I'm not sure if this is my last meeting or not. I, I, I think it is, but I. Don't know if, uh, if, uh. You know, if I've got a replacement yet, so I, you know, I, I guess it's potentially I could come back, but i- in, in the case I don't, I'd just like to say thank you to. All of you for putting up with me as the, the rookie on the. Uh, on the commission and, uh, I, I have to say I've, I've got a new appreciation for what the staff does, that's for sure. Um, it's, it's been a great experience for me. It's, uh, I, I've learned a lot. I've enjoyed working with all of you guys and, uh. You know, it's, it's great and, and, uh, hopefully at some, when the timing's better, I'd, I'd like to come back and, and, and. Perhaps volunteer my time to do it again. Without getting into, you know, the, the, the timing issues for me, but. Uh, the other thing, I, I, I would also like to follow up on the ADU. Situation, we, you know, that came before us, uh, several months ago, and I think. It went back with a list of questions that I think Richard was gonna get back to us on. Uh, so I'm also interested in, in, in where things stand, so that'd be great to get an update.
Okay, that's great, and we're. Glad you've been aboard with us, Mark. It's been great, so thank you for your time. Um, Vice Chair Mazza, real quick.
Just to follow up, uh, number one, Mark will always probably have the record. For the longest distance over, at least over. Many planning commission meeting ever held. Skyler may have it for. Those, uh, for city council meetings come from, coming from Abu Dhabi, but you certainly have it for the planning commission.
I think I was actually further away, but he was more remote.
Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention, uh, since we brought up ADUs is. The co-founder of Airbnb. Just started a company to build modular units. To distribute for ADUs. And it's going into massive production. So they tie together with short-term rentals and ADUs. Uh, depending on what we do or the city council does. That was announced last week in the journal. And that's it.
Okay, um. Well, if, if it is the case that, that Commissioner Jennings' last meeting, of course, this has been a true honor to be. With you during these meetings and the ten and a half years before I got to get on here to. Sit in front of you with Mr. Haney and, and, uh, learn from the things that you told us and, uh. You know, once again, Mark, I'm glad that you, that you've been aboard. Um, you never know how things are going. You may get another shot at this, so. Um, I'm absolutely honored to be here and, and I know that we all feel the same, so. Um, okay. With that. Um, we have staff comments. We have Director Malika, I'm sure has a couple things for us.
Certainly. Thank you very much, commissioners. Appreciate the comments. I understand the concern, um, with. The seventy-two hour notice. Uh, and I, I understand those concerns and one of the things we really strive not to do. Has to do really with supplemental, trying to eliminate supplemental reports and. Uh, the holiday just threw us for a loop, but, uh, I definitely hear you there and please know that we will. You know, work to minimize that or to eliminate, uh, you know, unless it's something dire. I, I would prefer. To stick to our regular publishing date, uh, the Friday before, or actually the Thursday before, so you guys would have it on Friday. Also appreciate the comments on the revision fee. Uh, we'll do a bit more looking into that. I am. That is definitely something that we, we have a fee. And I just wanna look at its application. And also the comments on planning commissioner training. I think COVID. Really threw everything for a loop because, uh, as mentioned by the commissioners, yes. We used to send folks, uh, to, I think it was the League of Cities, uh, provided planning commissioner training. And, uh, with COVID and all that, I, that, that kind of fell away and there was also a cut to the training budget, so that's definitely something that. We'll look at. Uh, Brown Act training, I think Trevor, that was BB, well now BBK would provide that.
Yes, we did, we did commissioner training last year and we will be doing it again, um, this year. All, all the commissioners, even ones that have done it before, welcome to the backdoor refresher. And we also, uh, will, will probably distributing a, a commissioner manual as well, so we'll make sure everyone is fully trained up and, uh, ready to go.
And then on the question of short-term rentals. Uh, that went, the LCPA that was heard by this commission and, and approved by the city council was. Heard in August by the coastal commission. And we'll actually be bringing a item to the new, uh, city council. The, the target date is, uh, I think. The first meeting in January. And the plan is to get direction from the council. The coastal commission agreed or offered, I should say, to work with the city. To present some items and further, uh, to, to discuss their concerns. So what we'll be doing is I'm in the process of getting a report prepared from the planning department. We'll present it to the council. To get direction from the council on if there is something specific they want us to pursue, or would they like staff? To meet with the coastal commission, um, and see what the coastal commission has, uh, to propose and. Yeah, I, I wanna get direction from the council before I start negotiating or, or working with them, and so we'll be bringing that to the council, uh, for feedback. And, uh, following up on council, uh, related issues on the question of ADUs. Uh, the, the planning commission, uh, provided us, oh, with a number of questions. At the last time it was, this item was heard, we took basically that action to the city council. And the city council directed staff to prepare an ADU ordinance that closely mirrors, I think is a fair way to say it. Uh, the current ADU regular, second unit regulations in our local coastal program. And so staff is working on that report. We'll have it back to this group. Uh, my target. I'm hopeful for, uh, February. Uh, so the new commission can hear it based on the direction given to staff by the council and. Uh, I think as we get closer to it, uh, and we know our agendas a bit better, I, I may be asking this commission if. Uh, well, we've obviously for the, oh, we get a, you know, new, the new, the new commissioner, so they can have a say in this, but. If it's the commission's pleasure because of the size of it, uh, if you guys are interested in me, uh, looking at a special hearing in February for that topic or. You know, roll it into, uh, one of our regular scheduled meetings, so I'll definitely, uh, follow up with the commission, uh, come January. Uh, for that comment and, and, and recommendation from you guys, uh, what you would prefer. And Trevor, while we're on the topic of ADUs, would you like to, I don't wanna misspeak on the, the Riddick issue?
Sure, um, I, I've, I've seen the article out there. The city was not asked for comment on the article and there's a no. Large number of inaccuracies in that article. It does not fairly represent what happened there. Um, the case has been appealed by the city council. The trial court. Made a determination that the city over the last twenty years has been misinterpreting its LCP. To require a coastal development permit for ADUs that are attached to an existing, uh, building. And that decision, um, is the number of problems. It, uh, conflicts with the city's consistent interpretation and also guidance from the, from the California Coastal Commission. So the Riddicks, if they, you know, their project was originally put forward as both a, an ADU attached ADU and an expansion of the. I think the master bedroom and master bath as well, and that, that project requested a coastal development permit and a request for reasonable accommodation. Which was denied by the, uh, city council without prejudice, and so they were able to go back. And propose a new project, which would just be the ADU and seek a re- reasonable accommodation, request for reasonable accommodation and a CDP. But they chose not to pursue that. Um, if that had pursued it, we probably would already have a decision on it at this point. Instead, they brought a case in court. And, um, you know, the city's gonna keep, um, pushing and, and resolve that, so I don't wanna get too far into the. Legal issues on that, but that is, you know, the status of, uh, where that case is right now. Um. That's what you were asking, Richard?
Yes.
Are you gonna talk about the, uh, the, the PWP, cause I could talk about that too?
Oh, well, certainly, we could talk about, uh, that, that feeds into the next one, which I think with that, I think about most everything. Oh, no. Uh, trails. Ain't got my list here. Uh, let me do the trails real quick, Trevor, then we'll get to, uh, Commissioner Hill's question about this, you know, with. Caltrans project. Um, the trails that Commissioner Hill brought up, that was part of. The trails maps and trails incentive program that the city council was looking at. And if recollection serves me correctly, we put together a trails map. Uh, Joseph Smith, uh, actually worked on all that. We put a trails map together. We submitted it to the coastal commission. As part of an LCPA. The coastal commission came back with changes. Uh, I wanna say that there was the addition of a trail. Uh, and that addition raised a substantial concern with the city council. And the city council voted to deny, uh, the, the certification of that local coastal program. And that essentially, uh, stopped staff's work on the trails incentive plan, which would have in, which would have included a map. That would have memorialized, uh, the trail you mentioned. Uh, in your, in your commissioner comments. Uh, so unless that's picked up again. Uh, by the council, it, it was removed from staff's work plan and we have not, uh, pursued it anymore. Okay, very good. Wanna make sure that answered that question?
Yeah, thank you.
And then with Caltrans, so, um, the MRCA. And, and this came up actually in staff's comment letter. Uh, they've had a public works plan pending for a number of years, uh. I, I almost wanna say a decade, uh, that is a. A plan to address public access, meaning vertical accessways, trails, uh, campgrounds. In the city of Malibu for a number of years. And it, it, it stretches from one end of the city to another. And that plan has never been finalized. Uh, we've, we've been following it at the coastal commission level. We've also have a planner. Uh, following up with MRCA and we've yet to see a, a final version of that. But as part of that public works plan, there is a proposed accessway. Uh. Uh, perhaps a thousand feet to the east of the Seacant Wall project. And the. While the Seacant Wall lies in the city's jurisdiction, so we retain jurisdiction, issued that CDP. Uh, the, the toe of that slope that it's. Part of, um, the toe of that is in state lands and the coastal commission would not, uh. Authorize the city to take up that part of the application, so they had to go to the coastal commission to, to get that. And as part of their approval, the coastal commission, uh. Has a, proposed a special condition. That's what it's termed, to, uh, have Caltrans fund part of that draft public works plan, which would be that. Um, stairway at Las Tunas. And I believe there's also a plan, uh, that shows a, a stairway extending out, which I don't. See how that's gonna work, cause I don't believe there to be enough beach. So we are, uh, I've been in discussions with the city manager's office. We are going to put together a comment letter to the coastal commission. Uh, the first part of that comment letter is that we would. We feel that the, the folks at MRCA should not have that as part of a public works plan and rather pursue a coastal development permit. Uh, that way, you know, we can have a, a look at it for purposes of consistency. And, uh, Trevor, would you like to talk about the nexus and, and the public works plan?
Yeah, we, we can get into a big discussion. It's not agendized here, but, um, Fisher Hill, I have strong concerns about what you raised about nexus and proportionality there. Um, you know, how there could be any kind of connection of, you know, between this repair work for a road. Requiring the funding of a public access in a different area and then having that specifically allocated to one particular organization for a project that hasn't been approved at this. Point in time. Uh, I think there are a lot of concerns about, um, what, what coastal's proposing there. Um, you know, part of the problem though is that, you know, it's Caltrans application, it's not ours, so. Um, you know, if Caltrans decides to give money to somebody, you know, we don't have any control over that, but, um. You know, I, I think that there's, there's real issues with, uh, requiring that type of condition. I think it's very inappropriate to, um, put it in place. Based on what we know right now about what the project is.
Yeah, and just to square the circle here, this, this whole master public works plan, this is what they were at one time or maybe still. Saying, oh, we just need one CDP for the whole thing. Has, is, has.
No, it's, it's not a CDP. It's in place of a CDP, it would be a public works plan. It's similar to the public works plan that was more recently, uh. Proposed, we, that, that we sent out a letter at the last Co- uh, council meeting.
It, it, it's one approval. For the, everything in the city.
Yeah, and then just to, 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 I, I didn't clarify on the issue about the traffic flow and the hours of when it's closing so forth. I, I did have some, uh, co- uh, communication with city manager McClary and I know that he's on that and you guys are dealing with that, so. And, you know, far be it from us to, uh, say what the outcome will be, but, but I'm glad to see that's being attended to.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Very quickly, uh, Trevor, I, I was under the impression that we went to court against. Phil Edmondson on, uh, public works plan for. Los Park and the court said that all public works plan had to go through the city.
I'm, I'm very familiar with, with that case. It, and you know, that dealt with an override provision, uh, that's not being used in this current, um, situation. Um, that, there are different aspects of that that, that have, you know, applications to, you know, what's being proposed here. But, you know, this isn't agendized, we can't get far into it, but if you have further questions, happy to talk about it. Also, since I'm here, I also wanted to, uh, thank all you commissioners for your, your time here on the commission. And if, if any of you are leaving, um, you know, I, I thank you deeply for the time you put in here. I know it's. Thankless work and it's, it's a lot of time that you put in, you know, and late nights here, so thank you for, uh, your commitment here.
Thank you. Um. Just two things, um, I don't think CDP and MRCA, they don't have that in their vocabulary, do they? That's not something they. They really pay any attention to, um, just one more thing. Do you have anything else, uh, Director Malika?
Uh, the last thing I wanted to say was just to echo what Trevor had said, and that's a thank you. Uh, to everyone for taking the time all year. And I appreciate it and we'll see who we get in the new year, but thank you again, uh, especially those who are leaving. Those who are continuing and wish everyone a happy holiday.
All right, likewise.
Great, so, just, just one more thing, Director Malik. I know. How busy you are and the last time this happened, I said something, so I'm gonna. I'm looking at a staff member's name on my screen that maybe you might have something to say about. Possible. Promotion.
Um, yes, uh, we'll have him turn on his camera. We'll embarrass him now instead of later, uh, but. Like to announce it is official. Tyler is our newest senior planner. Uh, you know, Tyler, you may remember, came to us as an intern. So we worked strongly with them. I mean, he, he blew us away as an intern. The guy pretty much showed up in a suit every day. Uh, but Tyler has, you know, just extreme dedication. Done a lot, uh, you know, he recently got married, but you wouldn't know that. He kept working. Uh, so we tried to get him to take some time off, but, uh, we wanna congratulate him and, uh, you know, he's your newest senior planner.
Well done, dude.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thanks, Richard. Uh, thank you, uh, Chair Smith. I appreciate the shout out there and, and yeah, this is also, I just want to, it ditto everyone's comments. If this is the last uh, meeting for anyone, I, I've learned quite a lot from all of you guys and, um, you know, it's, it's a pleasure working uh, for Malibu and, um, each and every one of you guys have, have grown me as a planner, so I appreciate every single one of you.
Just make sure you pay him, Richard, so he stays.
Understand that.
Um, okay. We're off to a wonderful start here. We have the consent calendar previously discussed items. We don't have any, so we have three B one.
I'd like to pull three B one. That's the only consent item, I think.
Yes, it is.
Okay, it's a comment and a motion. Our, our standards say that if you buy a, a property, I don't have the exact ones right here, but uh, that's not an excuse for needing an extension. And in this case, the property was purchased in, in mid-June of two thousand twenty-one. And in January of twenty-two, according to staff report, the applicant started redesign to a different type of plan. And yes, they explained that their mother-in-law had medical problems in Louisiana. They also explained that they had an expediter. So I know we usually approve these offhand to be nice to people, uh, but I think in this case, I'd like to make a motion to make it a one-year extension instead of a two-year extension. Since this is a basic, it's everything in the, in the.
Before we take any motions, we should take disclosures and see if there's any public comment.
Okay. No disclosure from me.
Commissioner Jennings? You're muted.
None, yeah.
Commissioner Hill?
None.
Commissioner Whitten?
None.
None for me. Okay, um. Senior Planner Brooks? Am I going to you right away on this one?
Um, I'm not sure. Do you, would you like a brief staff report? Or do we want to check what the order to see if a one-year extension rather than a two-year extension would be sufficient?
Well, I guess. I got a couple, I guess, uh, questions if we do the one year. Can I, can I go to you with a brief staff report, please?
Um, sure. Hi, good evening. Um, Renika Brooks, Senior Planner with the Malibu Planning Department. Um, this item is a request to extend a CDP that was approved by the planning commission. Um, as mentioned in your staff report, um, the current owner purchased the property about a year and a half after the CDP was approved. Um, I believe when they acquired the property, certain components of the project had been submitted to plan check. Um, there were also, um, some family matters they were attending to in Louisiana. Um, the owner's mother, um, was ill and she was primarily taking care of her. And so that kind of diverted her energy, um, from pursuing the, um, the plan check. Um, the owner did hire an expedite briefly uh, when they were attempting to make changes to the project. Um, they realized they needed to convert the second unit to, to kind of incorporate the second unit into the primary residence to accommodate their mother, her mother. They did briefly hire an expediter to help with that effort. Um, and then they also released that expediter. Um, that substantial performance was approved, uh, maybe a couple of months ago, maybe a month ago. Um, so they're looking to get an extension of the CDP so they could proceed with the plan check process. Um, that concludes my brief presentation. I am available if you have any additional questions.
Okay, that's great. So, um, who wants to go first other than myself?
Well, do we have public speakers?
Uh, Gladys Wodchik is, uh, in the meeting and is the owner for the property. I'm just looking to see if the applicant is also, they might both be signed in under that. If you could unmute for Gladys.
Oh, yes, I see.
We need to open the hearing first.
Dennis, are you opening the public hearing?
Yeah, so open for public comment or for public comment, please, sorry.
Okay.
Hello.
Here we go.
Hello. And you do have, uh, up to fifteen minutes to provide, uh, input.
Okay, I'm Gladys Wodchik and with me is Greg Ruth. And we're both up working on this project, so I will let him speak. But I don't hear if you have any questions or you need anything.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Welcome.
Okay, um, I wrote something here just to, um, clarify or, uh, just to, uh, explain. Uh, on G sixteen, twenty twenty-one, we purchased the property. At which time it was seventeen months into the CDP. I became applicant in one week. We inherited incomplete plant approvals for plan check. Uh, Bureau Veritas was not complete amongst some other agencies. In fact, OWTS was not even started. We, we worked diligently on that and we're able, we're only got the, um, uh, the, the ability to, uh, submit in mid-August. In, um, only in, uh, October did EH approve. Um, that gave, that takes us three, four months away, uh, to starting, um, substantial performance. Um, in the, in the summer, uh, months, Gladys's mother's health began deteriorating. We realized it would be necessary to convert the single-family residence and second unit, uh, which was approved into a single-family residence. The, the ADU is in the, in the same, uh, uh, building footprint. It's on the lower, it was on the lower floor, but there was no access to get there. You had to walk outside, get down thirteen flights of stairs, actually more before we started working on um, outside to get to the, uh, ADU. Um, this, you know, completely necessitated our need for substantial performance. Uh, the, the plans were, um, uh, while this was going on, um, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm a little confused. Um, while the, uh, uh, we were working through to get the permit, we, um, the regular plans, we were working early on, uh, back in probably September for the, uh, for the substantial performance. We had all the things ready to submit, uh, for substantial performance in January two thousand twenty-two, when we started working with Renika. This month Gladys wasn't really even able to be out here, but I was the applicant working on. Uh, we did, we did have an expediter and it didn't really go in the right direction. Um, their, their, our agenda was more modest and, uh, so when it, it appeared, um, I believe Richard was involved with it. It appeared it wasn't going to go through. We took back over the process. We were working with Renika and I think she did a good job. I think I did a pretty good job in getting the, the, um, substantial performance approved. Um, on that, we did not change the footprint. Actually, there's a couple of places where we, uh, decreased the footprint. Um, and, um, uh, so at that point Gladys was here one or two days a month. While this was going on, we, um, we had been working very diligent, diligent, diligently on the plans. I'm a little nervous and have, uh, received great assistance from building and safety to get this ready. We have every, they have opened a folder, uh, because they expected we could go into this. Um, then, uh, it was held back until we had this meeting. We have everything uploaded into a folder, which I don't know if that's normal, but they did it for us so that we'd be ready to go into plan check. I have everything in there and by Wednesday, we will have everything uploaded that is on the, the list, the required list for us to, uh, start plan check. We, I've, I've been working, had this staged for, you know, for a long time. So it's not that we weren't working on this. Uh, when we, let me back up. When we started substantial performance while we were waiting to get through, uh, the, the, I may not use the right term in this, to get all the, um, uh, approvals. Uh, we, for the red stamp, we then, we were ready, we immediately went into uh, the substantial performance. So we've not, we've, it's not that we haven't been trying to work. I think we've done, you know, uh, I hope you think we've done a good job. We so, um, it's very important to us that we get the extension. We will be in the plan check soon. I mean, basically on Wednesday, we'll be in the plan check, but we do want the extension. Um, you know, cause I, what I understand, it's, it's more in the norm of to be able to get the two-year extension. And we'd like, you know, we'd like to have it. The, the other thing is, I mean, you know, we're, we're getting rid of an ADU. Um, you know, I don't think that's against, um, I thought that was a positive, not a negative. Again, no, no increase in, um, in, uh, no change in the footprint and I, I think we've got a good project and the thing that again, we inherited plans that were not, um, uh, were not ready to go into plan check. We had to clean that up. And secondly, the substantial performance, uh, process took, uh, eleven months, uh, ten and a half months to, to go through. Um, so, and you know, we're right there on top of it. So, uh, I feel, I feel it's fair that we get the two-year extension. And if you, Gladys, if, if it's okay, um, Gladys, do you want to speak on, um, or, or? It's up to you.
Well, the only thing I would say, we have been diligently trying. Uh, my mother got very sick and that's been hard for us. And it just turns your life upside down when you're having a parent very sick. And I've tried working through this and signing papers and sending money, whatever I had to do to get it going. So I hope you'll take that in consideration and I, I hope we can make Malibu proud.
I guess that's it for us. We're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Very great. Thank you, you guys, um.
If there are any other members of the public present in the meeting who wish to provide comment on this item, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen now. And seeing none.
Okay, back to us here at the table, um, Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, hi, thank you, folks. Um, question for Renika. Um, sounds like we heard from the, the facts would seem to justify, uh, a one-year extension or even less. John's started to make a motion for one year versus two. In your view, is there any, uh, reason to go for the two or, but it sounds like they're, they're pretty close already. What, what's your take on it?
I was leaning towards the two because I know they were still traveling back and forth between California, Louisiana, and I thought, well, that might be hard to navigate plan check if they're doing it themselves. But if you want to reduce it, I mean, the planning commission certainly has that um, prerogative. Maybe that might inspire them to get an expediter to help that's more local and that could attend to the, the plan check process on their behalf.
They made it sound like they're pretty close.
They're closer to the submittal into plan check, but they would have to be complete with pan, plan check and pulling building permits and have commenced construction to vest or to memorialize the CDP.
To, to be, to be, to be, to be clear, we're, there's no vesting, number one, but two, the, the city is, uh, you know, not requiring or encouraging use of an expediter. That is completely an individual's, um, choice on that. So you should not factor that into your decision, commissioners.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, Vice Chair Mazza?
Yeah, this is a question for Richard. If something goes into plan check two days from now, is it reasonable to expect if they're diligent that it's approved within a year? This is plan check only I'm talking about.
Yes, the, I, I, I believe the building and safety department strives to have about a ten-day turnaround uh, when they get a submittal. So it, it, it really depends on, yes, the effectiveness of their structural engineer, their engineering folks to, to turn around quick documents to them. I would say the plan check can be completed at worst, it, it's usually a couple of months. Because you figure there's a ten-day turnaround, then their engineers got to do their thing. Uh, but if they're diligent about it, it, I think Yolanda will tell you it takes about three, uh, cycles. And then it's done.
Okay, I'm going to repeat my motion then, that, uh, this is a one-year extension rather than two-year extension, given the fact that according to Richard, they have at least an extra six months minimum above normal to get that process done.
So that's, that's a motion for staff's recommendation, but for a one-year extension out of two-year extension. Is that correct?
Um, I'll second that.
Okay, Commissioner Jennings? You're muted.
Um, as someone who's entering his fifth year after the fire, uh, and the process and not yet in plan check, uh, I'm going to suggest that things take a lot longer sometimes than one might anticipate. Uh, that being the case, I would support a two-year recommendation on this. Plus the fact that it's a no-cost item for the city. It's like, why do we care? It's, it's, why put people in a situation where they're going to be under more pressure? And that therefore are going to turn around and put more pressure on, on the staff to get their work done and that pressurizes the staff. If it's one year or two-year or they get it done at the end of the year, it just doesn't make any difference. It's not a downside. It's just, just being restrictive for the joy of being restrictive. I've got to not support them.
Okay. Vice Chair Mazza?
Well, I just want to point out our guidelines state that if you come in and redesign two, two and a half years after the fire, you don't get special privileges. And this does cost the city. Uh, we have to go through things twice. And we have to continue things and things drag on. And we get complaints all the time at city council. Why is it taking so long? Well, part of that reason is we allow. And that's why when, when staff tells me it's going to take three months and we give them a year, that, that seems to solve the problem. When it's two years, it'll end up being two years. You'll have Renika working on this twenty-three months from now. Um, and our guidelines are such that they were made because we had a problem with backlogs. We came up with these guidelines because of that. And we set strict dates and we said, if your house burned down and you flip it, the new, the new, uh, owner has to follow your, your limits. So in this case, we're going one year over that. It seems reasonable to me. Uh, two years is excessive. And I think at, at some point, we have to think of the other applicants that are in the pipeline and how long it takes them to get through. And, uh, that's why I made, I made this motion because it would be the same situation, sort of, if her mother hadn't got sick and that, but it would have been absolutely clear, no extension in our guidelines. So we're adding a year because of this out-of-state sickness, uh, but tomorrow, Wednesday, two days from now, this is deemed completed in the system. Everything's already been loaded. We have to, we have to look at the reason why these guy, policy guidelines were put in and they were put in to make the planning commission or the planning department have less of a backlog, less work. And we will become more efficient. If we exempt it every time we hear it, uh, it, it is not working. That's, that's the only reason I did this, not to be punitive, because I don't think it's being punitive. I think they can easily make the deadline if they're diligent.
Okay, so we have a motion and whatnot. I, only thing I'll say here to all this is when you're in plan check and we have to go through like three times if they have to look at it for the life of me, as long as I've been doing this kind of work. Why these people just can't one time? They can load those plans up with as much red ink as they want. Do it one time. So Vice Chair Mazza, if that was the case and these plan check folks would just. Load these plans up with everything that they see one time, not three times, then. You could probably say a year would be good, but they don't do that. So along with Commissioner Jennings, I feel that the two years doesn't really hurt us a bit, but. We, uh, I think we probably should just go ahead and take a vote because you're spending too much time on this. So we have a motion and a second, anything?
Lauren Doyle has her hand up.
Yeah, she does.
That we caused the hearing on, on public comment.
She's staff member, isn't she?
She didn't get called, did she?
She is a staff member.
Is staff, yes.
Um, Ms. Doyle, go ahead. Lauren, you're up.
Yeah, yes. Okay, sorry. I, I, I have myself muted. I, I did just want to say that, um, at least internally, I know. Richard, um, this is not external plan check, but internal plan check. Um. It spun out longer right now. Uh, Andre is letting people know it's taking about fifteen to twenty-one days. Um, at least for internal plan checks. That's not for True North, which is supposed to turn around in ten days. And I did also want to say that in particular, because. Um, they have to get a new onsite wastewater treatment system for this site. And because there are interrelated issues with the road widening for the next door neighbor. Um, I don't know that this is as much of a slam dunk in, in a year as you might think it would be. There can be complicated issues, um, as Commissioner, uh, Smith brought up. That's all.
Very much appreciate it. Thank you. Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, I think you guys all make good points. I was about to say that, you know, the applicants themselves feel like they're right on the threshold and so. You know, ready to go, but, um. Given what we just heard, uh, maybe I'm gonna lean more towards, yeah, why not give them the two years?
Okay. Are you withdrawing your second of the motion?
Well, I'll, I'll second the motion. That doesn't mean I have to vote for it, right? We're, we're still discussing it.
I think I'm gonna call for a roll call at this point.
I mean, to me, it's either, you know, either you give them the, the extension or you don't. And, you know, whether it's a year or two, it's, that's. It seems like they could get it done quickly now, but, you know, maybe, maybe not, so.
Okay, Recording Secretary.
They can come back for another extension if that's true.
Okay, so just for clarification, the current motion is for a one year time extension. Um, Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Jennings? Commissioner Jennings, you're muted. Thank you. Commissioner Whitten?
No.
Chair Smith?
No.
Motion fails.
Sorry, John.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Hey, roll call, please.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitten?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
No.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Okay, we're on to continued public hearings, which is four A. It is coastal development permit number eighteen dash zero one five. Site plan review numbers eighteen dash zero one seven and twenty-two dash zero two three. Variance number eighteen dash zero two four and minor modification number eighteen dash zero zero seven. An application to construct a new two-story single-family residence and associated development. This is continued from. The November seventh meeting. Disclosures. Or wait a minute, staff report then disclosures.
Hello again. Um, this project was last considered by the planning commission at the November seventh meeting. At the conclusion of the hearing, the planning commission requested the applicant. Provide additional analysis to demonstrate the project's compliance with the development standards. Specifically L I P section three point six K four. Um, that section limits the, the number of stories above the garage opening. When that garage is visible from the abutting street. When the applicant reviewed this request with their consultant. They determined the garage opening was likely visible from the street. And rather than incurring the expense of preparing the rendering, the applicant decided to modify the project. To reduce the number of stories above the garage opening. And this revised project is what is before you this evening. And staff has reviewed the plant, the modified plans and determined the project is consistent with the development standards. The planning commission also requested that staff or staff to provide a copy of the approved landscape plan. Which was inadvertently excluded from your last agenda packet. And when staff went to prepare the attachment for your report this evening, we realized the biology review was done. Um, it was completed prior to the city's implementation of the landscape water conservation ordinance. So, um, the staff has requested the biologist to conduct another review. Of the landscape plan to assess if it is consistent with the current ordinance, which it is. And that, that, um, updated biology review is included as exhibit, I think it's exhibit E to your report tonight. Just to give a little bit of background or a refresher about this project, it was originally approved by the planning commission. In July of two thousand and seven. In September of two thousand and seventeen, the amend, the CDP was amended by the current owner. Um, which slightly shifted the project, um, closer to the street. It added a basement and also reduced the project grading. Next slide, please. And the project before you tonight is substantially the same project and what, as what was approved by the planning commission with the CDP amendment. Um, this graphic shows the site, um, location, it's a vacant property, um, irregularly shaped. Located in Western Malibu at the northeast corner of Andromeda Lane and a right Horizon Drive. Um, the property is characterized by ascending slopes that vary from five to one to one to one. Next slide, please. The project consists of the construction of a new two-story single-family residence with a subterranean garage and basement. A new pool and spa landscaping, grading, an onsite wastewater treatment system and associated development. Next slide, please. This is the image of the slope analysis that shows the steep slopes in orange, which are scattered throughout, throughout the property. A majority of which are located on the northern one-third of the property. Um, as you can see, uh, because there's pockets of variance slopes throughout the property. Um, development of these slopes is unavoidable and staff does believe the variance request is justified. Um, the application also includes a request to reduce the front yard setback. Uh, to shift the project, um, south away from the steep slopes. Um, this takes advantage of the flattest portion of the property. There's already a graded access road in that area. And it also reduces the amount of project grading. Next slide, please. And shown here is the site plan that shows the impermeable coverage for this property is primarily. Um, defined by the building footprint. Next slide, please. This is the original, um, south elevation, um, for the residence. Um, that shows the two stories above the garage opening on the western side of the residence. Next slide, please. And this shows the second floor has, um, shifted about fourteen feet east. Um, to ensure that no more than one story is, um, above the garage. Next slide, please. It was brought to staff's attention that the standard landscape condition was omitted from the resolution. Um, with staff's recommendation, um, staff also recommend the inclusion of a new condition number forty-six. Which again is a standard condition. Um, and it, I'll read it into the record. Vegetation shall be situated on the property so as not to significantly obstruct. The primary view from private property at any given time, given consideration of its future growth. Uh, the remaining conditions will be renumbered consecutively after this one. Um, next slide, please. And that does conclude, um, my presentation. Um, staff does recommend adoption of, um, the resolution as amended. And this does conclude my presentation. I am available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Uh, Commissioners, disclosures? Uh, Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes, I, uh, did point out. I sent Renika an email pointing out the admission of that last condition she just had, which was a requirement of the bio review. And she has agreed with me that it's required and placed it into the, uh. Proposed resolution. Other than that, uh, no other discussion since the last meeting.
Uh, Commissioner Jennings?
Nothing since the last meeting.
Commissioner Hill?
None.
Commissioner Whitten?
Uh, I, I spoke with Adrian about it this afternoon and, uh, you just clarified a few things. I didn't learn anything new that's not in the staff report.
Okay, uh, nothing for myself. Uh, so can we, do the applicants want to speak?
I'm. I'm looking in the meeting. I thought I saw them in, oh, here we go. He just raised his hand. Thank you.
Hi. Hi, everyone.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, I'll, I'll keep it short. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, Renika basically went over everything. I just wanted to reiterate. Uh, and just refresh everyone's memory from November seventh. That the issue that came up was the, either the three D rendering showing that at any point of the street. That no portion of the garage should be, uh, visible or to move the bedroom that was above the garage. And I just, uh, that I did exactly that and I forced the architect to work overtime to meet that. Timeframe in order to make sure that, uh. This gets before, uh, all of you fine gentlemen and it doesn't go into next month's, uh. Hearing in which, uh, I believe two other, two new commissioners would be there. So I know you guys are familiar with this. And this was the only addition, issue and I, we addressed it. And, uh, that's that. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, back to us. Um.
I'd like to make a motion. To approve as staff recommends with the additional, uh, condition number forty-six.
I'll second it.
Hey, great. We have a motion and a second. May we have a, uh, any discussion? May we have a roll call, please?
I have my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go, go ahead, Commissioner Hill. Very sorry.
I, I just wanted to say this is still a no for me, uh, because of the, the minor modification. It, it, we're, we're just going beyond the limits of the code here in a way that's not justified as a special circumstance. Um, we're going thirty-two percent, um, the, the setback is thirty-two percent less than it's supposed to be. If they had designed this a tiny bit smaller, they could have fit the whole thing on the site. Maybe the square footage would have been something like forty-six hundred instead of forty-eight fifty. And that would still be two or three times as big as the ranch houses in that, the air, general area. Um, it just seems like we need to respect the codes and, and fit something on there that, that works. That it goes with the code and to call it a minor modification. It, it's really kind of a variance in effect. And by contrast, we had a application in our last hearing on point two and that really was a minor modification. It. Uh, and I think that served the intent of, of what that is. This to me just seems to go too far without justification as a special circumstance. Um, when, when a significant portion of the houses in Malibu are in slopes, they could have done this slightly smaller and fitted on there and fitted in within the code.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitten?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
No.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Hey, great. Um. We are moving past four B tonight and we will move right on to four C. Appeal number twenty-two dash zero zero eight. Appeal the planning director's denial of a time extension request to extend the planning director's previous approval of administrative coastal development. Permit number seventeen dash zero eight one. This is continued from the November twenty-first meeting. Um.
Chair Smith?
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, you have to look at me tonight. I'll be jumping in for, uh, Patricia Salazar.
Okay, I was just gonna call her, but yes, uh, well, I see her, but go ahead.
Oh, uh, she didn't, uh, Patricia, are you available? Would you, she didn't think she would make it, so.
Her name's on the screen.
Uh, her name is on the screen, but she did email a short time ago that she does have a pressing conflict. So I believe Planning Director Malika will be presenting this evening?
Yes, yes, I'll be doing it.
Okay, go right ahead. Thank you.
Sorry for the confusion. What you have before you this evening is the appeal of a request for an extension to a permit. For a property at two eight nine one six White Road. If I may have the next slide, please. There we go. As I mentioned, this is a, a planning director decision that was appealed. It was an administrative coastal development permit. Uh, those are issued by the planning director and as such are also extended by the planning director. From our files, the extension request was submitted by the applicant one hundred and fifteen days. After the three-year, uh, deadline. And the applicant had been pursuing, they were working through the plan check process. And they, uh, were under the assumption, if I understand the explanation correctly, that. They assumed that when they were getting their building permit extensions from the building official, those also would, uh. Satisfy the need for the planning department. In addition, uh, as we document in the staff report, uh, the. The reasons they gave us for extension do coincide with. Um, the reasons for due cause that are listed in our policy regarding extensions. Uh, however, as mentioned, the permit, the, the, the request to extend it though, uh, aim. Beyond the date that, uh, beyond the date in which we could process an extension. And if I may have the next slide, please? So, while this meets the reason for due cause, there's nothing in our local coastal programs guidance. Or in the council policy that gives me the ability to extend a permit. After the expiration date regardless of, uh, due cause. It, it, the expiration date is a pretty firm standard. And of roughly a lot, eleven hundred CDPs that the city is issued. Uh, fifteen. Uh, were required to reapply, uh, for a new application who were fall under this situation, the one you had before you this evening. Uh, Andromeda Lane, that was one where the permit had expired and as you saw, the, the project had to be brought back to this commission. We do. Offer, um, reduced fees, uh, since the majority of the work had been done. You know, it's essentially just bringing back. Uh, a staff report, uh, you know, looking for, making sure it complies with all the current standards and, and bringing it back to this commission. Um, so we have a mechanism and that's what we've been using. So that, that is our practice and that's part of the reason also. Of why I, I issue the denial. Um, then we also have the L I P, which states that extensions must be made in writing prior to the expiration date. So once again, I don't, I don't see wiggle room there. And the L C P does not have a relief method, uh, valve for something like this. If I may have the next slide, please? So staff recommends that while the, the reasons for due cause do correlate with the reasons in the policy. Uh, and that worked on with city council. Staff does recommend the upholding the planning director's denial for the reason stated, which was that the extension request was submitted. After the date of expiration and. After the date of expiration and as mentioned, the. Staff does not see a a relief mechanism from that date in the local coastal program. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
I I would just add to that. The the key factor is that they have to apply for the application before it expires. Once it's expired. There's nothing to extend. There's there's no ability under the code for the city to. Extend an application that's already expired. They have to get the app the the application for extension in before. Uh, the time actually expires.
Okay, thank you. Um. Disclosures. Oh, Vice Chair Mazza?
Oh, I just want to point out that uh. We had a case about a year ago. In Big Rock. I can't remember the name of the street. The the. Uh, Peter was named Heck Wong and was uh where they were about a week late. And it went all the way to the Coastal Commission. The Coastal Commission said, this is an absolute bright line. You can't be a day late. So. If this goes to coastal, it's gonna lose. It probably will go. Uh, one of those bright lines that. Is always followed.
I I I think Commissioner Mazza is mentioning inland lane.
That's correct.
Okay, um. Disclosures.
None. None.
Um.
None.
Okay, uh, the applicant?
The applicant and owner um mayor is available uh this evening to begin public comment. If anyone else is present in the meeting who would also like to comment on this item, please click the raise hand button while our owner applicant is speaking.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'd like to extend uh greetings. Good evening for to everyone, including Mr. Richard and everyone else who has been involved. Um. I like to ex- uh explain a little bit of a summary to what has happened for the extension and the confusion and everything. This is a family uh project for my mom and my dad. And then my father earlier in the year, when we were doing the pro- everything has been done, by the way. But my father got sick. It was a medical reason. We had to be in the hospital for months. My dad had multiple uh surgeries. And for that reason, everything that our lives got put on hold, including this project. And that's why the extensions needed that went uh over the time. And then even with that. I miss Yolanda was nice enough. I was extending it with third, thinking that that would be the extension that was needed. Not knowing that the planning coastal planning was something different. I've spoken with Richard many times about this. I believe I've spoken with a few of the commissioners. I took out the time I called them to explain the situation. Um. So. Uh, uh, everything has been done. I miss Yolanda also was nice enough to extend her part. That the only thing that is needed is an extension that we can pull permit like immediately. Um, so I do not see any reason why would this not be extended. Due to a medical uh emergency of the family, spending time in the hospital for a few months for their father.
Okay, um, thank you. Uh, commissioners?
Is there anybody else?
There are no other hands raised. If you'd like to close the public comment portion of the hearing.
We can close that. Um, back here with us, uh Vice Chair Mazza?
I'd like to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation. Uh, this is uh. Cut and dried. We have no choice.
Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, I'll I'll second that. I I think that. You know, it it the precedent issue is is a bright line there. Uh. Coastal Commission has pointed out, and I I I don't even see that there's anywhere in this that. The city did anything misleading or fell down on the job such that there'd be any kind of like quasi Estoppel kind of argument. I I I just don't see an opening here.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Oh, Commissioner Jennings?
Yeah, I'm gonna support the motion. Uh, it's a it's a. It's frankly, it's a ridiculous situation. I I'm entirely sympathetic with the applicant. The the differences between the planning department and the building and safety department are. Mysterious at least. Uh, and um. It does seem to be a waste of time. However, I think that the staff can mitigate the waste of time by allowing, since the project's already been done. And since it's an administrative CDP, it can just come back to Richard and go through the process again without too much of a um. Of a disruption. Um. On the other hand, this is not the first time this has come up, and it does seem to me it would be a trivial exercise for the city staff. To keep in mind when uh when time limits are running and to maybe give. Somebody a six months, well, not a six month, a once month warning saying, hey, you know, your CDP is about to expire. It would be kind of a simple little program to put together that it wouldn't even take much. Uh, staff time to to monitor. So.
Yes.
Um, maybe there was a way to try to resolve this problem in the future. However, having said that. Uh, where there's an extension involved, you've got to have some sort of a limit. Uh, you can't just say. Uh, you know, you can continue forever to ask for extensions for permits that have already expired. So I'm gonna support the motion.
Very good. Um, okay, uh, recording Secretary Evans, can we have a roll?
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Wetton?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Um. We go to new public hearing. Five A. Oh, okay, this is our wireless wireless right-of-way permit number twenty-two dash zero zero two coastal development permit number twenty-two dash zero zero seven. Waiver number twenty-two dash zero zero two, variance number twenty-two dash zero zero five, and site plan review number twenty-two dash zero zero four. An application for a new AT&amp;T wireless communications facility attached to replacement Southern California Gas Company utility pole. Staff report, please. And there he is, Senior Planner Eaton.
Thanks, uh, Chair Smith, and um. Again, um, members of the planning commission, the next item tonight, as mentioned, is for a new AT&amp;T wireless communications facility located within the public right-of-way. Next slide, please. The subject site is within the Pacific Coast Highway Public Right-of-Way between Lost Forest, Lost Forest Canyon Road and Big Rock Drive. It's on the land side of PCH in front of steep undeveloped topography. Next slide, please. The initial application was submitted in twenty nineteen, which proposed a new model pole within the right-of-way. As shown here, three utility poles already exist within that area. And new poles are the least desired design method pursuant to the MMC and the LCP. The applicant was asked to try and co-locate on existing infrastructure. So first, they tried to co-locate on the existing uh Verizon wireless site, but the applicant was not able to get permission from Verizon. Uh, to do so. Additionally, the co-location at that site would require the pole to be uh even taller than the pole that is being proposed tonight. Uh, so the applicant was then asked to look into co-locating on the SoCal gas pole to the left. Uh, that pole was approved by the city in twenty eighteen and had a condition of approval that required uh other carriers that wish to co-locate on that site. Uh, to co-locate if if it was feasible. Uh, after many months of deliberation with the applicant. I'm sorry, that the applicant did with uh So uh SoCal Gas. Um, they were able to obtain approval for use of the pole. Uh, SoCal Gas not have the permitting authority from the California Public Utilities Commission to allow these types of wireless facilities at their sites, but. Uh, the applicant was able to obtain that uh through this application nonetheless. If the applicant subsequently withdrew their previous application and submitted the application before you tonight for co-location on the SoCal gas pole. Next slide, please. The project proposes the following scope of work. It's a replacement SoCal gas utility pole with an attached AT&amp;T wireless antenna. Uh, reaching an overall height of thirty-five feet. The previous height was twenty-eight feet. Uh, there's electrical support equipment that's attached to the side of the pole. And there's installation of two uh underground vaults which support additional support equipment. Uh, there's three discretionary requests I propose in this application. There's a waiver for the placement of electrical support equipment on the pole. Uh, rather than around or within the same shroud as the antennas. There's a variance for the replacement utility pole over twenty-eight feet. And also a site plan review for the installation and operation of a wireless facility in the public right-of-way. Next slide, please. Uh, this here is a map showing the existing coverage in the area. The current location has in-vehicle and outdoor signal only, but AT&amp;T is looking to upgrade the area to have indoor signal as well. Next slide, please. The new site here looks to improve uh coverage in that area uh to allow also indoor signal as shown here in green. Next slide, please. So the replacement pole is proposed to be thirty-five feet tall, as mentioned, uh and it requires a variance to do so. The additional he- height will help meet the CPUC separation requirements between carriers, also provide enough independent workspace between the SoCal gas and AT&amp;T utilities. A site plan review is required for placement within the right-of-way. And the applicant is also applying for that waiver uh to allow the accessory equipment attached to the pole, as you see there. Uh, rather than um uh putting them within the antenna shrouds or underground as the code requires. The applicant's analysis for the waiver request was reviewed by the city's wireless consultant. And deemed to be satisfactory uh and not require undergrounding. Next slide, please. So so with that, staff recommends approval of the project as conditioned, and we are available for any questions.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um. Just. Oh. Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, uh, I have one question, one observation, and one concern. Question for Tyler. Um, have you checked with the house to the west whether the. Height increase from twenty-eight to thirty-five would affect their view at all? Have they they weighed in? Are they? What's the concern? Is there any concern there?
They have not weighed in, but I did try to assess that because that would be potentially the only one um that has view impacts. Uh, it seemed to be for me at least at an angle. I didn't go on the property, but it seemed to be at an angle. Such where uh there was no ocean views um for for them. And again, we didn't hear anything, so I couldn't confirm.
Yeah, I di- I didn't go out and look at it. I I just it just occurred to me. Short while ago, oh, maybe that. Just kind of imagining that the what I know to be there. Okay, um, just another observation. It's not. More than about fifty feet from Esha. I don't know that that's particularly relevant, but I don't think that was accurate in the staff report. Um, and then finally, my concern is. About the undergrounding. It is a requirement when possible. The reasons they gave us, uh, the the best reasons they gave us, I find unavailing. One being. Uh, talking about sing- signal degradation and attenuation. And we're talking about not a very long cable length here. I mean, it's on thirty-five feet up. The worst thing you would have to do is the the impedance is a little bit greater at a little bit more length. So you'd have to switch to a thicker gauge wire in the coax. That's. Really a marginal difference in expense, so I I don't see that as a rational reason to say you can't put it underground. And I I also don't see any detail in their point that uh quote here. After reviewing substructures, installing a thirty-by-thirty underground vault to house the equipment is not possible at this location. Well, the um utility easement there is pretty wide, so. I don't I don't understand why putting stuff underground wouldn't be possible. So that to me is a big concern.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Um, first question may may seem stupid, but why does a gas company have a telephone pole? What do they use it for?
Must be for their meters.
Yeah, that that's correct, for their meters.
Okay, um. Now. Uh, on this far as undergrounding, there are two vaults being put in underground, correct?
Uh, yeah, that's correct. Um. Go ahead, go ahead.
Now they can't get a third one in?
No, I don't. I don't think it's more of an and applicants can speak to this. I don't think it's more of an issue of, you know, can't put a third one in or a fourth one in, but there's limited space there in the right-of-way with the toe of the slope. It's a pretty steep slope uh there. Um. And so there there was also um geography issues with with their. With their uh undergrounding, but they can they can speak to it. They're here tonight. And also our our wireless consultant uh who reviewed their request is also here to to speak if needed.
Is is that in any of the slide zones, that particular cliff?
Uh, I don't know if Richard knows offhand, or if we still have Lauren. Doesn't look like it.
I I can tell you it is within the greater Big Rock slide area. I can't tell you anything specific about that cliff, whether it's more or less different than the rest of the slide area.
Okay, so it is in a slide zone. I can understand the undergrounding then. Uh, my real question was. You showed a map of increased coverage. And of course, it's right next to the the ocean, so most of the map was substantially uphill. And at thirty-five feet. The antenna, it looks like it's about ten feet from a cliff. Uh, so I don't know how it would broadcast. Up that cliff and then over into inland. Um. I don't know if you, I I should ask the expert, I guess, on that, but it seems like this is mainly just for highway improvement rather than. Inland. So I I I guess I, if the expert is here, I'd like to ask him about that. Or our consultant, one of the two.
Yeah, both, yeah. The applicant and 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 uh Robert Ross is here uh are are consulting. I think I think the applicant can probably answer why she needs the certain coverage.
Okay.
Can it? Can I inter- I should interject here. I'm sorry. I I. Considered whether I needed to recuse myself because I thought maybe this would affect my own reception or somehow reach my house. And so I looked at the map very closely and determined that. It it wouldn't offer any improvement or or change up where I am. And so if it's not helping me, then it may not be helping. I think John may be right. It may just be on the highway.
We have all the beachfront stuff, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just wondering why that map was drawn that way. So if he's here, uh. My real question is. Can a signal hit a cliff? Go up the cliff and then inland as far as your coverage area shows, or how does that work?
And we'll we'll ask him that question first. Go ahead, uh, recording Secretary Evans.
I was just going to check in with Trevor about whether we need to take disclosures before we get to that point.
I was just gonna ask. So disclosures, gentlemen, uh, Vice Chair Mazza?
None.
Commissioner Jennings?
Mr. Jennings.
I know, I'm trying to get my mouse to go over the little microphone.
Commissioner Hill?
Uh, none other than what I just said, that it looked like I was pretty kind of close, but I looked at the map and I'm not affected.
Okay, great. Uh, Commissioner Wetton?
Uh, none. I went out to the site uh and and looked at it today, but didn't speak with anybody about it.
Okay, and myself, nothing. Uh, so we can go to the applicants.
Thank you. Um, our applicant is Gillian Newcomer, and then we do also, following her comments. Uh, we do have Robert Ross available in the meeting, who is our city's consultant and also available to respond to your questions. Um, so it could be unmute for Gillian.
Hi. My name is Gillian Newcomer. I am with Synergy Network Connect, representing AT&amp;T in this bill. Um, in regards to the coverage objective, the coverage legend kind of breaks it down. It does state with the RF engineers stating that the. Sufficient proposed coverage, given the types of colors that outline the in-building service, as you can see, the strongest signal being the green. Um, colors, dark range, highlights the strong signal strength. And then going over, it does not reach and go through, you know, land or mountaintops, but it does connect to other cell sites nearby. Uh, this site is ideally for to fulfill the coverage gap along PCH. And those, you know, traveling along that and nearby. So this was um. This data was put together from the RF engineers, and that was their calculations and coverage as to how far this. The the um signal was able to go. And that's all I can have for you without being the RF engineer for this.
Okay, let me ask you a follow-on then. So the green is misleading. It's mostly on the highway, not mostly in the mountains. Is that? Is that?
Given where the proposed node with the little. Red dot there. So I think it's what it's showing. Maybe it's expanding a little bit farther out than what it needs to, but it does kind of line up where PCH is. It's showing the burst of coverage, given the front residential, you know, that the. You know, that this nodes across the street from, so um anything, it kind of just cuts off at a certain. Certain area in the ocean, of course, uh for obvious reasons, but along that PCH, that corridor, it's it just kind of shows you the strength and how it kind of. Weakens out going north and south. So the green is, I wouldn't say the green is misleading because it does about right up to the hill, so where the little red dot is shown.
Yeah, I would tell you what I'm saying is the the green goes substantially into the mountains. Compared to the highway and it, in reality, it doesn't go substantially into the mountains.
Um from what I'm seeing, I I I would actually beg to differ, I I do see where the red dot is and and going south from the. The dot going more into the ocean, it's, it is showing that it's it's outcast into the ocean and going into the the residence across the street, so. Um I I mean, I can maybe get a more in-depth closer glimpse or maybe a different. Scheme of colors I can request from the RF engineers to provide, but I I kind of feel like this this is pretty close of what. The ideal signal strength is for this type of site, this isn't a small cell site, this is considered a macro but in a small. Micro build.
Okay, Tyler, uh that pretty much answers my question, could you put that slide back up again, is that possible? The coverage slide.
Yeah, sure, Parker, um if you don't mind, it's midway through, there you go.
So this shows a red dot substantially away from the highway. And and your pictures show. The pole right on the highway, so is that red dot wrong or is or am I looking at this incorrectly?
Um I I think with that slide, it shows off, it doesn't really show the run-in of where the highway is. I'm looking at slide fifty, um and it shows the LTE coverage standalone.
John, John, your confusion is that the coverage on the map here goes way out into the ocean, that's not the coastline.
Oh, that's not the coastline?
No, the coverage goes extends beyond the coast, the coastline isn't shown.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, so that that red dot is on the highway?
Yeah.
That answers my question, thank you. I don't know how you never know that, but uh.
Thank you. I'll have him draw it better next time, I promise.
Just put the highway in. Okay, I have no other questions.
Uh. Commissioner Jennings. Okay, Commissioner Wetton.
Oh, the only question I have really is, so the alternative is having a second pole. Right, I mean, if you don't combine it onto this gas. Pole, then you have to have another standalone somewhere.
Correct.
Is that right?
That's right.
Okay.
And that's four poles?
That'd be, that'd be the fourth pole in that area, yeah.
That's that's all my questions.
And if I, if I may say too, this is uh SoCal gas's first partnership with wireless to allow a co-location on their poles. Um they are allowing and and creating program and application to a co-location program with wireless. After this site's, you know, established and hopefully approved um for other site locations to kind of limit the. A new above ground facilities for wireless carriers throughout, starting in California, so hopefully this will be the first approved one for us to partner with, but. Um I just kind of want to let you know that.
Yeah, you can imagine the rent money, um go ahead, Commissioner Hill.
Yeah, uh so far, I I've heard that it might be inconvenient to put it underground, but I I haven't heard anything that says it's impossible. Resolution number twenty sixty five requires accessory equipment to be underground when possible. Um I've heard a little bit of speculation here, I don't think the attenuation argument is availing because just use. Higher uh gauge cabling and you're good, and so it seems like the only potential issue is. Whether there's space and. You know, if if the the easement is wide there, the cliff isn't that close, we're talking about a thirty by thirty box. Um I, can anybody tell me it can't be done?
I can, um I can answer that, um the biggest thing and the number one reason that we found, we did go out there with uh Bouchard, our construction company. And a few others as well in a Sessi area, um we we're not opposed to putting our equipment in vaults and underground vaults. They're safer down there, but given the location, the bottom of this, the hill, the rock side that looks like a ravine behind there, they found that it was not. Possible to put a vault safely there to where the equipment would not be. Um compromised as far as we would have to put an air conditioning unit in there to keep for temperature controlled. We would have to, you know, run the risk of having rock slides, um many, I I have to look at my points, but. I know that there was many reasons as to why putting it up against this hill and what what was behind it with that ravine or. Um drop off was not, it wasn't capable of having a vault installed there.
Yeah, well, I I would say that air conditioning, that's again, an inconvenience, not an impossibility.
Right.
Rock slides, you know, we're gonna have rock slide issues regardless, so and and maybe not that significant, so.
Right, water runoff, men- many different things, but there's there's, I mean, we've been doing this as long as we've been doing this and installing the the vaults, looking. Assessing this, the locations is what we do, to install it, we can do it, but not here. And that's why, it's like I said, we weren't opposed to putting it here, but given the conditions and where this is and and what it entails, it didn't seem, it. Literally all arrows pointed to not possible here because of even just debris, water, everything getting into the vaults. Um and compromising the equipment itself there, I mean, we've, we've had those issues, we we have them all the time. That we have to send crews out and it's an inconvenience, it's troubleshooting, it's, it's just. One thing, it's just a big headache and a lot of money just being shoved in there for a site that was put up and. Constant issues because equipment was put underground in a spot that it shouldn't have gone.
Well, okay, so for commissioners, my concern here is, part of my concern is precedent and, you know, if we're just gonna say. Uh you don't need to abide by this regulation because it'll cause some headaches and some anecdotal. I mean, we we don't have any real concrete evidence that just says, look, here's the site, here's the geo thing. There really is no space, we we really just getting assertions, and so in terms of precedent. The next one that comes along and says, yeah, I know we're supposed to underground it, but you know, you let those other guys do it just because it was inconvenient, so. I I'm I'm just not seeing the evidence here.
Okay, um. Vice Chair Maza.
I'd like to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation. Uh the reason I'm making that motion is there are two other poles there, this will, there'll be three poles there, a guard rail, a cliff. And I think this is extraordinarily hard installation, so uh I'm gonna go with the gas company.
Uh just to confirm, uh Chair Smith, you did close the public hearing and and that motion was staff's recommendation, correct, Commissioner Maza?
Correct.
Yes, I closed the public hearing, thank you. Um. Okay, do we have a second?
I guess I'm im- implicitly hearing that nobody else cares about this, I'm the only one here.
No, I'm just saying that this, I believe. In a landslide area, in that particular part of the highway, uh I think they do have a point. I don't think this is uh gonna set a precedent because this is. Probably the tightest space we've allowed it had happened in all the polls we've done. Within with all the poles around it, so it's not like it's making a, a uh. A blighted area, it's already blighted.
So so the rationale, this is exceptional because of that, those particular circumstances.
Correct.
Why the crowd of poles, that that this is not gonna, somebody can't cite to this and just say, yeah, you let them off easy.
I don't think it's a question, letting them off easy, I think one of the. Good points here is is they've got backup power, so.
Well, we've also got a partnership between the gas company and the. And the phone company, which is a new thing, which might be good for the future for combining rather than having more separate poles in the future.
Well, I I agree with all of this, I'm, I I would vote for the poll with the with the amendment to say at all, what has to be under, what can be undergrounded is undergrounded. Everything else sounds great, so.
All right, let me, let me call Mr. Ross here real quick, Mr. Ross, go ahead.
Muted here, um yes, thank you, uh one of the things that we, that I did look at is I was looking. At what Commissioner Hill was talking about is undergrounding this, um the particular equipment that they've. Asked uh to use on this particular site, it just doesn't lend itself um to an undergrounding, I also looked at. Um took a look at the site to see whether you could actually put a underground vault in that area. Um the underground vault for most of the equipment that is used. It's not a little seventeen inch by twenty inch vault, we're talking. Probably a twenty foot by fourteen foot wide in a thirty foot hole. Um in order to set this in and then you'd have to have air conditioning ducts that would come out of it. Um there just wasn't enough room to put that vault on the other side of the uh guard rail. Um safely uh to do that, uh it's not to say that there, different equipment cannot be used underground, there is. Uh but the type of equipment that AT&amp;T is using this, the IONM. Um for this uh small cell is um, it's it's just not designed to go underground. It can go into a base of a pole or it can go on to a pool.
Great, thank you, sir.
Well, it sounds like we're getting closer to evidence of impossibility here.
So we have a motion, we have a motion from Vice Chair Maza, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, great, um maybe we have a roll call, please.
Vice Chair Maza.
Yes.
Commissioner Wetton.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I just want to comment that uh Jeff and Mark set a precedent for the United States on their last vote.
Is this our first unanimous vote?
No, they did, it's your first gas company pole.
You guys are always unanimous.
Thinking how wonderful that is.
Hey, do we make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn, see you all next year.
What's that?
Happy holidays, everybody.
Yes.
Happy holidays.
Vice Chair Maza.
Bye, everybody.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings.